We'll start with the invocation by the Reverend Terran M. We'll start with the invocation by the Reverend Terran M. Rogers. We're going to be fair to everyone tonight, that was very surprising and thank you. But we'll start with the invocation by the Reverend Terran M. Rogers, pastor of Ebenezer Baptist Church. If everyone rise for that invocation, remain standing, then we'll have the pleasure of allegiance.
Let us pray. God, we thank you for this day, for blessing us with life, health, and strength. We thank you for this opportunity to be a part of this governmental process by which we are all able to experience the abundance of life that you so promised. As the cold Arctic air has creeped into Hampton Roads on today, and just yesterday it was 70 degrees outside, this just reminds us that there is a higher power at work that is greater than any of us here. We pray now for the members of the City Council of Virginia Beach that have been chosen to make decisions on behalf of the people of this great city. Give them the kind of wisdom that you granted King Solomon, and may that wisdom be imparted into this place upon these leaders, so that these citizens, the citizens of this great city, can live in peace and harmony, and every citizen will have a chance to achieve the American dream. Now we ask for your guidance as the business of the city goes forth on tonight, and we pray that the standard of heaven would be our guiding force. It's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Rogers, thank you for coming down, thanks for everything you're doing for the city. We appreciate it very much. Thank you very much. We have the roll call, and I would like to make one quick statement, as I said earlier in the informal session. I'd just like to take a minute to let you know face to face how seriously I take the recent allegations against me. The process of going through each individual vote has begun, but I need time to respond factually. In the meantime, please know I would never do anything to intentionally harm or embarrass the city of Virginia Beach or Town Bank. I've been a consistent protector of both and have always had the best interest of both at heart. We cannot let this issue stand in the way of taking care of important city business. We owe that to our citizens. Thank you for your understanding, and I will move forward with the agenda. Do you have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By vote of 11 to 0, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to reset.
Do you have a motion for approval of the minutes for October 21st, 2014?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
It's my understanding that we have Boy Scout Troop 401, sponsored by Brigadoon Civic League, here tonight? Are they here? If they could stand and be recognized, if I mess up with your names, I apologize. Scouts are Cameron Hayes, Peter Benedict, Ammon Carthon, Isaiah Burke, Joshua Kramer, Xander Varela, Brandon Brown. Their leaders are Ross Kramer and Jeremiah Burke, and we thank all of y'all for coming In addition, we have some Boy Scouts from Weblos, from PAC 406, Tidewater Council. Are they here? If they could stand, alright, yeah. We have Alex Clark, Charlie McLaren, Dylan Evans, Joe LaCroix, James Hyatt, Keith Pozella, Mitchell Wilson, Philip DeWitts, Wyatt Kolmitsky, Yussa Frye, Evan Ruddock, and the leader is Bruce Ruddock, and we thank you all very much for being here. I'll open a public hearing on proposed exemptions from local property tax, Stop Clef International Alliance. Are there any speakers?
No, no speakers, Your Honor.
Ma'am?
No speakers.
Transitions Community Development Corporation.
There are no speakers on the A, B, C, or D.
Okay, there are no speakers on USA National Karate Do Federation of Virginia or World Affairs Council of Greater Hampton Roads. I open a public hearing on the franchise of city property, Atlantic Avenue, valet station, and queuing area.
I do have a speaker, Your Honor.
We get the speaker.
Barbara Messner.
Barbara, we welcome you tonight. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Sorry, I was getting it ready, I didn't know I'd be the first one. This is on the franchise on Atlantic Avenue? Oh, okay, the, sorry. Does the second person want to go first?
There's only one speaker, I believe.
Okay, alright, okay, sorry. Okay, on the franchise, I understand it's for five years, and I don't understand why it's for five years. Usually you have a trial basis with something new, and I also don't understand why we need valet for the block, because I thought there was always problems with, you know, drunk, rowdy behavior at the block, so why we're having valet for them, I don't understand. And the valet parking in front of the Hilton takes away parking from us, the valet on Laskin Road in front of the new Summer House takes away parking from us, the valet is right in front of parking meters, and the systematic removal of parking and access to the oceanfront is something I am very much opposed to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Open a public hearing on excess city-owned property Pine Top Drive in Brunswick County.
No speakers, Your Honor.
And a public hearing on grant of easement over city-owned property Lake Gaston Palm Station, Brunswick County.
I have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Ms. Messner?
Okay, did she say Brunswick?
Yes, item number four.
Or Burned. It wasn't Brunswick, it was the Burn property.
Lake Gaston, number four, that you asked to speak on.
Okay, well, it's the Burn property, 80.
Hey.
Sorry.
You do not want to speak on item number four?
Um, sorry. Yeah, it is item four, it's the Burn, B-E-R-N.
Ma'am, this is under public hearings, item number four.
Okay, I thought that was the next thing in line, because she called me.
Do you have Lake Gaston on here?
No, I didn't give you any card.
Okay, well, she did not want to speak, we'll move on.
No, I didn't give her a card, I called.
Thank you. We'll now move to the consent agenda, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances and resolutions. Item I, one, which is ordinances to declare exemptions from local property taxation, A, which is the Stop Clef International Alliance, will have an indefinite deferral this evening. B, for approval Transitions Community Development Corporation. C, USA National Karate Do Federation of Virginia, Inc., for approval. And D, World Affairs Council of Greater Hampton Roads, approval. On item I, two, which is the ordinance to declare city-owned property as excess and authorize the city management to convey same to VDOT at the Lake Gaston Pipeline Easement in Brunswick County, that will be deferred to December the 9th. Is there a speaker on that, Ms.?
No, Your Honor, I only had an abstention on one of the council members.
Item three, ordinances and resolution to authorize A, granting of an easement over city-owned property located in Brunswick County to VEPCO, and the clerk would please note that Mr. Moss is abstaining on that item. Item four, and item B, C, B and C and E under I, three, are going to be heard, because we have speakers, but for approval would be item 3D, which is acquisition of Head River Road, 3380, Head River Road. Item four, ordinances to authorize temporary encroachments and deportions of city-owned property. Item A, which is the David L. and Helen M. Bird remodeling.
We have a speaker there.
We have a speaker on that, so we'll have that on the agenda. Item four B is for approval, which is Chartway Federal Credit Union, Ray Lake Fountain, Stone Dust Path, and gazebo at 5700 Cleveland Street in the Kempsville District. Item five, which is ordinance to establish the Tidewater Medical Transport LLC, Ray an annual emergency medical service permit. Item six, ordinance to extend the city's date for satisfying the conditions, Ray closing Lake Avenue, Oak Street, and portions of Locust Crescent and Ellis Avenue. Item seven, ordinances to accept and appropriate A, $121,707 from the Veterans Administration Supportive Housing Program to the Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, Ray housing vouchers to homeless veterans. B, $26,569 to Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, Ray the Federal Home Program Regulations. C, $1,000 donation from the Walmart Foundation to Fire Race Cert. Item eight, which is an ordinance to authorize and transfer, and the transfer of underlying fee interest to proportion of Northampton Boulevard and the city of Norfolk, Ray weir maintenance, and the clerk would please note that Mr. Moss is voting no on that item.
Open a public hearing for planning.
Under planning for consent is first item Galleon, item J, one, which is Galleon Investors 12 LLC, enlargement of a non-conforming use at 23168th Street in the Lynn Haven District as modified, and the clerk would please note that Mayor Sessoms is abstaining on that item.
Yes, sir.
Item two, which is Burnett Capital Investments LLC and Reed Enterprises, Inc. at South Plaza Trail and Princess Anne Road. A, modification of proffers of the conditional zoning agreement approved 27, March 27, 2012. Clerk would please note that Mr. Martin is abstaining on item two A. B, conditional use permit self-storage facility in the Rose Hall District. Item three, which is Evergreen Virginia LLC, approved October 24, 2006 at 5301 Virginia Beach Boulevard. Item, and Mr. Sessoms is going to be abstaining on that, Mrs. Frazier, please.
Yes, Your Honor.
A, modification of proffers of the conditional zoning agreement. B, modification of conditions of a conditional use permit motor vehicle sales and service in the Kempsville District. Item four, Araceli T. Marshall and Beiler Enterprises for a conditional use permit vocational school training center for nurse aides at 5441 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Kempsville District. And item five, Kingdom Investing Outreach Center, AV Associates, LLP, for a conditional use permit at 4525 East Honey Grove Road in the Bayside District. Item seven, which is the Studio Hampton Roads LLC and North Landing Investment LLC for conditional change of zoning from O1 to conditional B1, Ray a photography studio at 2513 North Landing in the Princess Anne District. Item eight, which is ordinances to amend the city zoning ordinance, A, section 1127, Ray open space, public sites and recreation areas within the PDH2 district. Clerk will please note that Mr. Moss and Mrs. Henley are voting no on item eight A, and for approval, or for indefinite deferral is item eight B, which is the section 2106 D1, Ray modifications to workforce housing units. So moved, Mr. Rogers.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By 11 to 0, you have recorded the consent agenda noting abstentions by the mayor in J1 and 3, and nay vote by Mrs. Henley on J8, a nay vote by Mr. Moss on J8, an abstention by Mr. Martin on J2A, and a nay vote by Mr. Moss on I8.
Thank you.
My abstention was on both matters, 2A and 2B.
Okay.
Not just 2A.
And Madam Clerk, for the two that I abstained on, the key, the letters are being submitted, but basically the key line is, although it appears it would be speculative to conclude that Town Bank would realize a benefit or detriment based on the information that I've given the city attorney, I am nevertheless abstaining to vote on this application. Mr. Moss?
I abstained on item two, which is the, item two, 3A, excuse me, on VEPCO because of the dividends I received exceed the threshold under the state conflict interest law. I voted no on item 18, which is the transfer of underlying fee on the weir maintenance, because it wasn't necessary to transfer the city's equity entrance to assure maintenance of the dam, and therefore I saw need to transfer it. And with regard to the planning item, with regards to doing away with the P1 zoning required in PDH2, I object, because it removes a procedural protection, because in the past it would have taken two votes to change the open space rather than just one, and I think our job here should be to protect the procedural interest of the homeowners, and this takes that away.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. We'll now move to item number 3B, city manager to execute a cost-sharing agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers regarding a study to establish a framework for assessing the sediment and nutrient reduction benefits from dredging. Who's the speaker, please?
Yes, sir, I have C. Brandon.
Brandon Jolik.
Jolik.
C. H. Jolik, thank you.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Specifically, I'm addressing the scope of work to the study here. Condition number one here is conduct a limited literature review. If you're going to do a study, it ought to be objective, and if you're paying $10,000, that's roughly 100 hours to 200 hours worth of work here. I think the word should be objective, so, to make it more fair. I think it's operative term, it's a requirement for paying for it here. The second thing is, is the final report reviewed internally by the Army Corps of Engineers in the city of Virginia Beach. All comments will be addressed before the report is considered the final. I think it should be open to the public to look at the comment, either if it's finished or beforehand, but it certainly should be open for transparency, so we can all see it. It affects dredging. It affects my community.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Mr. Spoor, do you have any thoughts on that?
They're just editorial items, if you want to have the study published, it will be put on the website, it would be available.
That'd be great, we appreciate that very much.
I just have a question. I know the Army Corps of Engineers is doing this for us, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, when they do work, because it is being done by them, are they subject to different regulations as a contract agent versus something they organically do in terms of all the public participation and all the kind of procedural hearing things that they have for work they do, that they put their name on? They're pretty extensive that they have to do in terms of taking public comment and soliciting public comment, so are they accepting this contract work outside of those requirements?
As far as I know, they're going to have to follow all of their normal requirements, which as you point out are probably more extensive than ours.
It would really be nice, and not here tonight, but for someone just to communicate to this gentleman what those are.
If we could have Dave Hanson follow up with him, Mr. Spoor, that'd be good.
Okay, it'd be great.
Thank you, sir, for coming down.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Do I have a motion on?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the item for acquisition at Eaglewood Drive.
Item number three, C, acquisition of 1025 Eaglewood Drive.
I'm sorry, that was B on dredging, I'm sorry, I always want to hit them.
Item three, C, acquisition of 1025 Eaglewood Drive from LMW Properties LLC. We have a speaker?
Yes, Your Honor, that's Barbara Messner.
Barbara, we welcome you again.
Okay, on Eaglewood Drive, we've been battling on this since October of last year, because there was a proposal for a Buick dealership there, and I wasn't clear, Mr. Moss gave me information, but I understand that, you know, first it was promised as open space, and now I'm being told that it's $800,000 to buy less than four acres, and it's with CIP money, capital improvement money versus open space money. And since that wasn't mentioned on the agenda, I would like input from whoever can give it to me on whether or not it's going to be guaranteed open space and if we have to purchase it, because we already own the property that used to be the SPCA, and I've been told through the grapevine, there's nothing formal, that one of the reasons for purchasing it is to make a right-hand turn onto General Booth Boulevard, because we used to have a light right there to get out. And I would just like more information, and I don't know if we need to buy that, and also to buy it with capital improvement money.
We thank you very much for your comments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the question, please.
But, Mr. Mayor, I do think it's important for the larger audience at Red Wing to know, when we went out and talked with them, as many of the people he'll know, even at the forum as well, is that we were purchasing this property, and some portion of it maybe reserved as open space, but it did represent some value and option, but we would work with the community, so I don't want anyone to think this is, you know, Brilfield or anything, that they really have the intention of doing something here, but it will be done with the community. I know Mr. Earn will do a good job of looking out for their interest there, but...
Thank you, John. I'll call for the question, please.
By 11 to 0, you have approved the item for the Eaglewood Drive.
The next one, city manager to execute an operating agreement with Lynn Haven River Now regarding the Aquaculture Center. Please call the speakers. And all the speakers will have three minutes, in order to be fair to everyone.
First speaker is Karen Forjay.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here and talk about the Aquaculture Center. We were here a few weeks ago for the approval of the rezoning of the property, and we're here tonight for approval of the management agreement between the city of Virginia Beach and Lynn Haven River Now. I'm Karen Forjay, and I'm the executive director of Lynn Haven River Now, and I'm here to speak in support of the Lynn Haven Aquaculture Center, and also to answer any questions that you might have about what we're going to be doing there and our role as the manager of the property. Virginia Beach with the city council at the forefront has been a leader on water quality initiatives and restoring and protecting our natural resources. Our oyster restoration work in the Lynn Haven is a model for the whole Chesapeake Bay, and this Aquaculture Center will allow us to take that to the next step, to be able to restore our native oysters to areas of the river where we don't currently have oysters. In about 50 to 60 percent of the river, the native oyster population is still at a very depressed level, and so all the benefits that oysters bring to water quality are really only enjoyed by the northern part of the river, the northern 40 to 50 percent. So the Aquaculture Center presents another opportunity for the council and for the city of Virginia Beach to really take a leadership role in supporting water quality improvements for all the tidal waters in Virginia Beach, not just the Lynn Haven, but also Al Creek and Rudy, and the eastern branch of the Elizabeth River, which also will benefit from this spat-on-shell work that we can do there. Lynn Haven River Now and the city staff have worked really hard with the neighborhood and other stakeholders for over two years on this project, and many of the concerns and interests of the neighborhood and the other stakeholders are reflected in both the eight proffers that are part of the rezoning, and also in the management agreement. So I'll go real quickly through what some of those are. The hours of operation are nine to five on weekdays during the months of April to October, and that's in both the proffers and the management agreement. The purpose of the center is to do spat-on-shell, and I'm running out of time already, and spat-on-shell work. No oysters will be grown to market size there. There is no odor created by this process. We actually have a bag of shells here, if anybody is interested in seeing them and smelling them, they create no odor. It's also not a noisy process. There will be one center manager, an LR Now staff person, and when she's loading and unloading tanks, she will have an intern, but there will not be a lot of, there will be at the most one or two. Other people may be coming to the site.
We think, yeah, I've got to be fair to everyone, have the same amount of time, and I know that the district representative, we have some questions, so that will...
You have questions, yes.
Please. Okay, John, and then Barbara.
Of the $40,000 that you'll receive upon execution of the agreement, meaning Lynn Haven River Now, and $60,000 on April the 1st, 2016, and $50,000 per year thereafter until such timeless termination of $50,000, none of which we were told when we were doing the rezoning, but how much of any of that goes to paying labor and other expenses not directly related to this project, but are subsidiary a cost of Lynn Haven River Now itself?
None of it. It all goes to, and I can provide you with the budget that this was based upon. Lynn Haven River Now will assume all responsibility for maintenance and the cleanliness of the site. We will carry the insurance for the site and have a paid staff person there, as well as the upkeep on the equipment at the site and actually, you know, doing the work.
But not to exceed the taxpayer funding.
For both city projects as well as other projects funded through grant funding. So city projects, like the Laskin Road Shoreline Project, the spat-on-shell work will be done there at no further expense to the city.
I just want to focus on this particular piece if I could. So will this pay the full cost of the operation, or will Lynn Haven River Now be supplementing or adding to these funds to operate the facility?
We will supplement it with interns and volunteers when that's needed, but I hope that we've written a budget that's really, you know, a realistic budget for what it's going to cost to run the center, and our hope is that those funds will cover the cost of running the center. It's also set up in the annual review, the annual financial review. There are two audits that the city will do every year of our books for the center, both in March before the season begins and in October at the end of each season, and if there is excess funds, if there are excess funds, then those funds will either come back to the city or be reinvested in the site in purchasing new equipment or updating equipment.
Well, I certainly appreciate your organization's willing to do this, but the public needs to know that they are paying for this service 100 percent.
They're paying for restoration work in the tidal waters of Virginia Beach. They're paying for the benefits that will come.
If you'll excuse me, please, thank you. They're paying $400,000 to build the facility, that's city taxpayers' money. You are operating it under basically an agreement which you're being paid to do. I just want to make sure it's clear that it's the taxpayers that are making this happen, and I appreciate the fact you're willing to step forward to do it, but it is the taxpayers' money.
A second. It is.
Thank you. Mrs. Henley.
The scope of management services, I'm not clear when it's operational. It says the center will be operational between April 1st through October 31st, and during the other seven months of the year, da-da-da. Well, is it April 1st through October 31st, or October 31st through April 1st?
It's April 1st through October 31st, and it's quite possible that it could be actually a shorter period of time than that. It's a water-temperature-dependent process. We'll actually use water directly from Long Creek and put the water back into Long Creek, so we can only do the spat-on-shell work when the water temperature gets to a certain level. So usually by mid-April, the water temperature typically is warm enough, and by the end of September, generally it's too cold for us to continue to do that. We set it up for April 1st through the end of October to span whatever variation there might be from year to year.
So this sentence, the next sentence should say during the other five months of the year.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. And during the other months, when we won't have a staff person there regularly, on a daily basis, we will still maintain the property and be there on at least a weekly basis.
So that's during the winter?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, exactly.
Amelia?
Okay, just to reiterate again, you're all going to work with the community, as remember, we talked about those who have been there for 65 years. And you also mentioned that if for some reason it didn't work out, these are, you know, that can be moved.
That's true.
So that is still, that is still the process.
The office building that will be constructed there will be a permanent structure on a, you know, I mean, it could certainly be taken down, but that's the only, the only really permanent structure. The tanks are portable, the tanks will be strapped down, but they could be moved. And we did add to the management agreement, you got, you should have gotten an updated copy today, in response to the Civic League and to the Civic League Committee that we've been working with, we added two more provisions, kind of last-minute things, we added traffic to the compliance section, and we also added a provision where we will meet, have a formal annual meeting with the representatives. meet, have a formal annual meeting with the representatives from the Civic League, representatives from Lynn Haven River Now and representatives from the city to assess formally on an annual basis how things are going and make any changes that seem necessary.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Your Honor, Ms. Wayne McCoy.
Next speaker is Wayne McCoy, did I hear?
Wayne McCoy.
Okay, here he comes. Thank you.
And the speaker after that is Chris Lugford.
We welcome you today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here in support of the Aqua Center. I'm real excited. I think Virginia Beach has been the case in many cases, is leading the charge on water quality. I happen to have two clients that do aquaculture. The difference is they actually sell the oysters and the clams. This is more about getting oysters into areas that don't have oysters and we have seen tremendous water quality benefits through, and of course, as you know or may or may not know, I was on the Chesapeake Bay Board for 11 years and the Chesapeake Bay Board started the oyster program. We started the funding through municipal fines. That has been a tremendous success and of course Lynn Haven River Now has really taken the ball and run with it. I do have experience with aquaculture type facilities, mostly on the eastern shore. These are low impact, low tanks with basically water pumps, but the benefits oddly enough, even to Long Creek, the water that comes out of the tanks will actually be cleaner than the stuff that comes into it as a result of the filtering. But in my mind, the most important thing is the spat at the castles will be taken to areas that don't have oyster strike. And so as we move up into the watershed farther, we'll see the benefits that we've seen in the Lynn Haven River and that basin up into the water column. So I think it's exciting. I'm glad you're considering it and I'm very much enthusiastically supporting it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Chris Lugford and Bob McGoon. When your name is called on this second, please come forward till you'll be ready.
We welcome you tonight.
Members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm in favor of this project and I've been going over today what points to hit. I know that there's some points here, economic concern and what the benefits are. I think that this facility, it's hard to put a price tag on the benefits of what it's going to do. Putting oysters back in the water, first off, let me describe what I do. I'm an oyster farmer already in the Lynn Haven. I've put over 2 million oysters in the Lynn Haven up to this point. I don't see this operation as competition. I see it as something that's going to help the river even more. So we have basically four factors that are four legs of a stool that are restoring the bay right now, restoring oysters, one of which is aquaculture, what I do, one of which is controlled wild harvest. The other thing is sanctuaries and the fourth leg of the stool is conservation and restoration. And that's what this facility is going to do, provide more conservation, restoration through the spat on shell, through the projects that will put more oysters in the river. There are going to be speakers and maybe you've heard, there are people who will say that maybe this is something best left to the private sector. Well, I can assure you, I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing. I'm going to put more oysters in the river every year. I'm going to do it and I'm going to have carryover. There'll be oysters that aren't harvested, but I'm in it to make money. I think that the conservation part of this can go hand in hand with the private sector and will actually help it because they're going to put their oysters in areas that won't be harvested. They're also going to be putting oysters to help supplement the wild stock of Lynn Haven in a more natural way. Reef's, cages, they all benefit and continue to help the water filter. I want to say that I think that up to this point, Lynn Haven River Now has done a great job of reaching out to the community and I think that, I have friends that live on Bay Island, I have friends and I understand that there's a lot of concerns from the neighbors. I really, in my personal opinion, feel that Marina Shores and other area things nearby are, you know, already have industry going on. This is going to be a very small and quiet operation comparatively speaking. I think that what's going to happen here is going to far outweigh the concerns and I think that the Lynn Haven River Now staff have been very transparent about what they're going to do there. They've reached out. I think that that is a group that has been up to their word thus far and I think that we can trust them fully to run this center and not be a poor neighbor. I appreciate it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you. I was hoping to be a little bit later in the speaking, but.
We thank you for coming down.
Yep, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Bob McGoon and Cal Casier.
We welcome you tonight.
Maybe a little bit unusual, my name's Bob McGoon and my family's been a resident at 2148 Winward Shore Drive for over 50 years and the president of the garden club was unable to get her card submitted in time. So while I'm in favor of the project, very much in favor of the project, I would like to give her my opportunity to speak.
She can have her own time, please.
Okay.
You've got three minutes and then you'll have three minutes.
I greatly appreciate that. Again, my name is Bob McGoon. My family has been at 2148 Winward Shore Drive for over 50 years. We've enjoyed overlooking the waterways, Leward Shore Drive, Long Creek and out to what I remember is Seashore State Park, not first Landing State Park. So I and my family felt compelled to support Lynn Haven River Now and the city and this application for an aquaculture center to be located under the bridge, under the bridge where equipment used to be stored and most importantly, a facility that will benefit the waterways that my family has known and loved for so many years. Many meetings have been held, many opinions expressed and many concessions made. And on October 21st, as you know, you approved an application for a conditional zoning change reflecting input from the community. Tonight, you will hopefully approve the management agreement between the city and Lynn Haven River Now. As I mentioned, there have been many meetings held and I attended all of the civic association meetings. There were unofficial and official votes, one for, one against, one for and another one against last evening, but I have to state that it was a 21 to, 22 to 21 vote. So, and that was following a three day notice of the civic association meeting and an unfortunate flyer that was stuffed in mailboxes prior to the meeting last night, which talked about the location disrupting the residential quality, violating privacy, threatening more and more traffic, et cetera. So with such a short notice and a negative flyer, I'm surprised that the vote wasn't more lopsided than it was. So most importantly, I think the, this application has had the steadfast support of the Broad Bay Island Garden Club and Kathy is going to talk about that. As a member, the former member of the planning commission in James City County and Board of Supervisors, I really admire and appreciate this leadership that the City of Virginia Beach has shown in this matter.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
I don't have her name. Would you come forward to the podium and state your name, please?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Mastin and I live at 2237 Winward Shore Drive. I'm here tonight, I'm not the president of the garden club, but I am here representing the Broad Bay Island Garden Club, which coincidentally, and I didn't even know this until preparing for it for tonight, it's the oldest garden club in the city. So that's something that we can be pretty proud of. Several of our members are here this evening with me to express our support for the aquaculture center. Unfortunately, many of them are out in your vestibule area. When the project was first proposed, there were residents in support and also residents with legitimate concerns. Both the city and Lynn Haven River Now have gone out of their way to address these concerns in a meaningful way. The proffers made in the zoning document that you have already approved and the language in the management agreement that you are considering this evening have provided assurances that going forward, the aquaculture center will be well managed and well maintained within our opinion, no negative impact to our community. I would like to especially acknowledge and thank Karen Forjay for her tireless work. Anytime anyone who had any misgiving whatsoever, she gave up many, many hours to meet with our folk and try and get the facts on the table. She's done a terrific job. We are aware that there is some skepticism from neighbors who live in close proximity to the proposed site and I think that's understandable, but the vacant site, which has, with the exception of a very small piece of that property, has been owned by the city for many years. And unfortunately, that property, which is at our community's gateway, has oftentimes been the parking lot for large construction vehicles, has oftentimes been encamped and at times has really been the gathering place for illicit undertakers. The garden club has carefully considered the impact of the proposed aquaculture center on our neighborhood really as a whole and we've come to the conclusion that a fenced and landscaped, well-maintained and well-managed property is far better, a far better use for this city-owned location. The added benefit is the fact that the site will be used to seed oysters and these oysters will ultimately contribute to the improvement of the waterways that are so much part of our daily life. So in every way, I think this project is a win-win. So in closing, I would respectfully ask that the council consider the facts of the proposal and recognize the safeguards that have been put in place to protect the interest of all concerned. The city will benefit, Lynn Haven River Now will benefit, our waterways will benefit and we really think our neighborhood will benefit. So I urge your approval.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Kathy, would you fill this out for me, please? Cal Casier. Thank you.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor Sessa, members of council and Mr. Spoor. My name is Cal Casier. I reside at 2000 Alfie Road in Bay Island. My wife and I have been residents of Bay Island for 32 years and we consider it to be one of the finest communities in our city for its serenity and surrounding waters and canals. To coin your phrase, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call it the greatest neighborhood in Virginia Beach.
Which is the greatest neighborhood in the world.
I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed aquaculture center on my behalf and not as a spokesman for the Bay Island Civic League. I say that because as a member of the Civic League, I was asked by the board to chair an ad hoc committee along with four other members and representatives of our garden club to study the project and its effects on the community and report back with a recommendation. The committee has been working with city staff, Lynn Haven River Now and others for the past year and a half, addressing many valid concerns that dealt with a host of things like noise, odors, lighting, traffic and so on, who are particularly sensitive to the adjoining property owners' concerns and in fact invited them to meet onsite with Lynn Haven River Now, city staff, the landscape architect and the fence contractor. Standing today, I can say without any hesitation that all the concerns were fully vetted and then agreed upon and most importantly, are documented in the eight proffers and the conditional change of zoning which you approved October 21st. In addition, these conditions are once again memorialized in the operating agreement we have before you tonight. I'm confident with the extensive landscaping site plan, Lynn Haven River's commitment and willingness to continue to work with neighbors and to be sensitive and correct any possible future missteps and the existing city ordinances that we have, that this center can be an object of admiration and forward thinking. What we have had since the new bridge was constructed is an inattractive side of dirt with massive concrete structures often used to park construction equipment. I would gladly trade this for a well-designed and maintained landscape and fenced environmental project that restores our historic oyster and helped clean the Lynn Haven River. I wish to acknowledge with thanks Ms. Karen Forjay for many, many hours she spent with us, her patience and willingness to accommodate all the concerns brought forward and I thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
If you have any questions, we'd be happy to.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ed, and I can't pronounce the last name, S.C.I.L.A.G.Y. U. And then Dale Stahl.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Hello, everybody. I just want to say from the beginning here that as a landowner on Broad Bay Island, I am in total support of what Lynn Haven River Now is doing to restore the oysters in the Lynn Haven area, all right? And in the 22 years I lived on the island, I haven't seen water that clean. But what I am opposed to is the site, all right? This site is at the beginning of our island and I ask anybody on the committee here, who would want a commercial agricultural site right in the entrance to your community? As it was stated earlier, there's a, quite a little price tag associated with this. I am in total agreement with that. I'm willing to pay my fair share to have the, you know, have a site like this, but we respectfully would like to see this site put somewhere else. You have the Brock Environmental Center, which is a beautiful facility. Lynn Haven River Now could possibly have a site over in that area. I don't believe that this belongs on our, at the beginning of our island. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down, sir. Next speaker, please.
Excuse me.
Mr. Salat.
Could you put up the map of the, Mr. Whitney, could you put up the map?
This is not a planning item, so.
So we have an issue that deals with the piece of land use and grant an easement, but we have no map? Thank you. Thank you so much. I can't ask the question I'd like to ask.
Dale Stahl and Donald Edwards.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity. I would like you to consider the agricultural center in a negative manner. As Mr. Salat just pointed out, there's not a soul on the item that doesn't believe in the oyster restoration. It's the location, location, location. The lopsided vote that you heard from the gentleman before me was because the Civic League only permitted Civic League members to vote last night. Otherwise, it would not have been so lopsided. January last year, Mrs. Forjay noted that they would use a bobcat and a conveyor. This year, in a letter sent out around the 14th of November, it's down to the noise will only be a lawn mower. Now that's a significant change to do the same job. In January, we were fortunate to have city councilman Jim Wood attend the meeting along with the city representative. City representative, if I recall correctly, was Mr. Stevenson. Mr. Stevenson stated, "No agricultural center would require city to purchase island properties for stormwater retention ponds." In other words, if you don't approve of this agricultural center, the city is going to buy lots and we're going to make retention ponds and they may very well be next to your residence. Well, if that's not a quasi-threat, stand by. Further, the same gentleman said that the aquaculture center would help the city fulfill state requirements for the reduction of pollution into the bay. I've heard that this is not true. I can't confirm that, but that's what I've been informed. This past November, Ms. Forjay stated in a Lynn Haven notice that they would not be selling anything at the center, yet the city document, one of the exhibits, state that they can sell to commercial farmers and others. Commercial farmers, ah, so we are certainly going to evolve into a commercial action. For a moment, picture in your mind that we're not talking about developing the center on Bay Island. Picture that this center is going to be developed next Picture that this center is going to be developed next door to you, in your neighborhood, on your neighbor's property. Wow. I bet you would leap at that opportunity.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. You've run out of time, and I've got to be fair to everyone.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Donald Edwards and Joanne Philo.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. I'm Donald Edwards. Grew up on Bay Island. My family still lives there. I'm an oysterman. My concern with this project going in on the island is, you know, if your goal is to grow oysters, you must include industry. Industry is what took the oysters out of the river. Industry is the only, we're the only people that can put it back into the river. By building this center the way you're building it and operating it the way you're operating it, it's going to be limited to this nonprofit work or, hey, if we got time, maybe you can come in here and do a couple runs and this and that. My big point is if you're, if you're going to build a facility, and we must have this facility or that river will never recover. This technology is the only thing that's going to let that river recover. And as oystermen, we have two thousand three hundred acres of oyster bottom out there. These reefs, they raise awareness and it's nice and they're putting little babies in the water, but our problem is shell. We need shell in the water. We need to grow reefs. So the problem is here is the city's using the taxpayers' money to build a facility, but it's not open to everyone. And I think it should be moved somewhere to where this tax-paid facility can be open to all the taxpayers and all the citizens, all the residents, the hobbyists, the landholders, the industry people, the restorationists. And this is a bad place to do that because it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Now, you know, the boss asked me one time, he said, "Donny, you know, we know what the problems are. What are the solutions?" Well, there's three other sites in the city, and I guess when there's a will, there's a way. Crab Creek, went by there this morning, the dredge spool on the other side, west side of the Lesner, is packed with oysters. They may tell you that the water quality's bad, but I think that's from one failed experiment with some kindergartners, all right? The other scientists say, "Perfect. That water doesn't get any better than that." You also have the city marina at Vista Circle. You'd lose a couple parking spots, but there it is. It's elevated also. You're not going to worry about flooding out your equipment and your tanks. Every time we get high water on Bay Island, that floods. You know, it's already plumbed in and wired up. Put your tanks there. There's also a huge area between the two roads on Great Neck Point, between West Great Neck Road and Great Neck Road. It's about four times as big. It's right across from Bay Island. No residential area, high ground, great water, bulk-headed, fishermen going down there right now fishing, plenty of room to do a great aquaculture center that could be used by everybody, everybody that had an interest. And have I run out of time yet?
Just about. You've got a couple seconds.
Okay, so that's my point.
Thank you very much for coming down.
I have a question if I could.
Please, John.
I did, because as anyone, the audience may not know, but the award that was made to Lynn Haven Now was done as a sole source award. And so I asked for a copy of the city's purchasing agent as to the justification of why no public solicitation was made for competitive bids for the procurement act, and on what basis did they determine that a sole source award was necessary. I'd like you to take this and read this, and at appropriate time, I'd like you to come back up at the end if you don't mind staying, and I'd like to have a discussion with you about the validity of that claim relative to your experience. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Joanne Philo. And Michael Farley.
We welcome you tonight.
Joanne Philion, appreciate having a little bit of time to speak. I've lived in my home for thirteen years. It's on Broad Bay Road, right across the street from where the site is. And I realize that people have worked very hard to try to make this site as best it can be, but I'm directly affected by it. I oppose the location of it, and it's been very divisive to our neighborhood since it's come about. I don't think an aquaculture center belongs between two houses. If you've been out to the site, it's literally located between two houses in a neighborhood in Great Neck. And I feel that it's going to devalue my home, and I think everybody who lives closest to it opposes it. I've heard a lot of comments tonight about the lot and the condition that it's in currently. I see the lot every day. I'm sitting next to the people that live right next to it, and it's not trash-filled. It hasn't been a nuisance. It hasn't had vehicles parked there or have been preparing for the site. It hasn't, it just hasn't been a problem. So I think all of us support Lynn Haven River Now and what they do, but not at that location. And I think we're all concerned about some of the details. I asked last night about a conveyor, and I was told that there was no conveyor. And then if you look on the site plan, there's something there that says conveyor and shell, shell area, shell washing area, I think it was. Besides the conveyor and the storage bays and that type of thing, there's all the tanks. There's four tanks immediately, and there's going, it's permitted up to ten tanks, so they're four feet high, six to eight feet long. They're open tanks, and there's a pump for every two tanks. I don't know how that can be no noise whatsoever. And as I said, the neighbors living right next to it, and that's going to interfere with the enjoyment of their own home for seven months out of the year. And I agree with the Brock Environmental Center or the spot that the last gentleman just mentioned might be Possibilities. And I think an aquaculture center should be something that invites school kids, you know, tourists, locals to come there and participate and learn. And, you know, I love kids, but I don't want a bus full of them showing up on a loud field trip next to one of my houses. So that's about all I have to say. I do oppose it, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you for coming down.
I have one question if I could.
Yes, sir.
Since you said you lived across the street, I can kind of visualize what that map looked like.
Mm-hmm.
During your time of living there, have you ever communicated to the city anything that, as a property owner, that we weren't doing, therefore made a complaint to fix something on the site?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Michael Farley and Constance Posneck.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad to be here. I've never been here before. And I will make this very short. I am here because I object to it. I don't object to those cute little oysters. I like them as much as anybody does. They're always smiling. But I do object to the location. It's called the NIMBY objection, not in my backyard, only I think it's worse than that. It's in our front yard. It's at the entrance to Bay Island, and I think it's inappropriate for a residential community. We are in fact, what, zoned for single-family housing? And I think that putting it there is kind of throwing the lady that we just listened to under the bus. I don't see how it would increase the property values. I've looked at a couple of realty how-to books, and none of them said, "Mike, you want to improve the value of your house? Go put an aqua center at the beginning of the neighborhood." It just doesn't work that way. I thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Constance Posneck.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. That's a tough act to follow.
That was a good one.
I'm Constance Posneck. I've been on the island as a resident of Broad Bay Island since nineteen eighty-five. And I really appreciate you taking the time and paying attention to our concerns. The Aquaculture Center, sponsored by Lynn Haven River Now, does serve a purpose. Nobody can argue with that. It's a beautiful idea, and it will serve to clean up the waters. The location is the worst thing in the world. It's just not fair to the people who live there, who pay their taxes, the residents who are close by. There's no emergency necessity that makes this project have to be done right this minute, and yet it seems to be running through really fast. Last month, we had a situation with the rezoning on the agriculture issue versus the residential that was hurried up a month, and that left the residents unprepared to be able to present to you, although I was here at that time. And the Civic League was represented to have a vote supposedly in favor when Ms. Forget had presented at the same meeting. We didn't have a vote at that time. There was absolutely no vote, so there's a misrepresentation there. We did have a vote last night, and it was opposed. The neighbors whose properties are most directly impacted, you've heard, they are definitely opposed. The traffic on the land side of, and on the Lawn Creek is going to be somewhat of an issue. It's different than the residential traffic. The lawnmower-type noise that we can expect from the pumps, it's going to run from nine AM to five PM. One lawnmower per two tanks. They're going to go up to four tanks, then they're going to go up to ten tanks. Can you live with a lawnmower in your ear all day long, five days a week, five to seven, five, what is it, nine AM to five PM? All those lawnmower noises and you're going to have a happy life at your neighborhood? That doesn't make sense. That site is not, you know, a necessity. There are other sites that are proposed. One proposal is even put this project on a barge, put it at the city marina. You can barge it into the, walk it in, barge it into the, oh, to the Brock Center so the kids could have an understanding of it. But most of all, this is a residential neighborhood. It is not designed for industrial purpose, and it's not fair. If it is fair, then you can each have one next to your houses, you know? Think about it. That's not our position. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight, ma'am. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Barbara Black and Blair Hollowell. Barbara Black? Is there anyone in the...
Barbara Black? I have a sprained ankle. I know I saw her. I have a sprained ankle. I'm sorry.
Take your time. Take your time. We're glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you very much. I am, as they said, Barbara Black, and I've owned my property on Bay Island for thirty-six years. And I do think most people would agree that the Lynn Haven River Now Aquaculture Center is a wonderful project, but not located in a residential neighborhood. These facilities are not located in residential neighborhoods, and they don't belong in them. I'm asking that you please reconsider or defer this. The spot zoning that was so rapidly done by the city of Virginia Beach is one of the most egregious actions that amounts to the heavy hand of government or the majority overruling the rights of the minority, and that's un-American. To be clear, the last council meeting when Mrs. Forget, Director of the Lynn Haven River Now Aquaculture, was called on by Mr. Woods and was the last speaker and spoke well over three minutes, I need to correct the record. Bay Island Civic League did not vote for acceptance of the Aquaculture Center. It said we, at the meeting, it said we voted with a hundred and fifty to two hundred people, and the meeting was well represented. Mr. Woods, you said that. And we don't have, we only have a hundred and fifteen people that are members of the Civic League in the first place. So that didn't happen. It was voted against last night with forty-two total voters, and that's probably an accurate amount of people that come. We've never had more than a hundred people at any meeting, and it's only one vote for households. So that was a total misrepresentation that a hundred and fifty to two hundred people wanted it. Mr. Woods also asked Mrs. Forget if the immediate neighbors have been contacted. He smoothly ignored that they oppose it. I have spoken with twelve of the fourteen homes located nearest to the site. All twelve of the homeowners don't want it. They want the same privacy as they have known as homeowners and fear their property value will be decremented. The Rose, Hotchkiss, Philion, Valentine, Miller, Witcher, and five of the homes on Bay Island Quay oppose it. So I don't know why you've ignored those people that are most affected. I'm certain each taxpayer in the city of Virginia Beach can pay their small portion to afford to place the Aquaculture Center in an appropriate location and would not want to save money at the homeowner's expense. That is what civic means. This has brought much angst to our neighborhood and pitted neighbor against neighbor, and some relationships may have been fractured beyond repair. The committee that was to assist Mrs. Forget was comprised of people for and against the project. The reality, in reality, the person against it was left out of the last meeting and emailed at nine PM that they had ironed things out. Mrs. Forget in her email said that people were harassing the supporters that needed to be addressed. This process has been tedious and heavy-handed, and Mrs. Forget was the last speaker and not challenged, and I'd hope you'd give that consideration from the last meeting.
We thank you very much for your comments, ma'am. Hope your ankle gets better.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker, please.
Blair Hollowell.
We welcome you tonight.
I'm real nervous, so I'm going to try to get through this. I want to thank you for having me. My name is Blair Hollowell, and I'm a resident of Bay Island. I'm investing greatly in rebuilding my home there, and I'm not a member of the Garden Club. I am a member of the Book Club. And last night, thankfully, I got to vote, and someone asked me my opinion on this project. I'm here to tell you that I am against this project. As you can imagine, this issue has been very intense. There is considerable discrepancy between what one person says is going to happen and then what people who are in the business of doing this say really happens. And I'm concerned about the location of a permanent structure at the front of our neighborhood for what has been portrayed to us as a temporary project and the precedent that that would set. But I'm also concerned about an unchaperoned organization solving a problem like oyster preservation with a two to eight to ten, maybe, tank proposal that would be costly to taxpayers and virtually unregulated. Their proposal is very open-ended with very few specifics. There's some time, maybe we'll be working here, maybe we'll be working during this time or another, and zero documented accountability for these proffers. So the proffers are listed, and it says, "Hey, we'll meet," but it doesn't say what will happen. Is there financial restitution for the people around them if they feel like they're not upholding their end of the bargain? You know, there's no controls for the community at all. In our community, each of us is accountable to our neighbors, and I can't see why this should be treated any differently. I absolutely support water quality improvements. I love to eat oysters, and I support the Lynn Haven Now projects, but not here, not at the front of our neighborhood, right where our sign that says, "Welcome to Broad Bay Island" is. And this is, it's a lot for me as one of the newer residents of the island to think that I just sunk everything I have into this house that is going to be affected by this. So thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
If the gentleman who read that could please come back, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, excuse, John, I think we might have, can Mr. Woods, the representative, speak first?
Certainly. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, well, first off, I appreciate everybody coming out here both supporting and against it. There's an incredible amount of confusion here, a good bit more than there was the first time around. There's been support, opposition, support, opposition, back and forth. I've heard from people on both sides of this. And frankly, some of the questions that have been raised tonight haven't been raised before, which concerned me a little bit. What I'd like to do is I'd like to move for an indefinite deferral on this for a number of reasons. This gentleman's concerns are one that I'd like to explore a little bit further with respect to the commercial use. The lady who just spoke with regard to the accountability, I think that's probably, I think a lot of these may be fairly easy questions to answer. I think also the, there just needs to be a little bit more outreach in this community because there is just way more divided than it was the last time I was there, and that's what's making it very confusing to me. The location isn't as big of a concern to me based on the site plan and what they plan to do there, but there is so much differing information that there's too much angst in the neighborhood for me to move forward with this, so...
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion to defer indefinitely in a very long-winded manner.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing to that, that we certainly get and solicit from the industry and... and do a validation on that sole source justification and whether or not that really stands up. I'd like the legal office to take a look at all that and render us an opinion as to whether or not the procurement act was complied with.
I got a motion and a second.
Second.
I'll call for the question, please.
I voted of 11 to 0.
Thank you.
You have deferred indefinitely the application for the Lynn Haven Aquaculture Center.
I'll go to item number 4A, David Allen Helen M. Byrne. I think you had a speaker.
Yes, sir.
Call the speaker.
We have two speakers, Your Honor.
Okay.
Mr. Burdon is representing the applicant.
Well, let's just hear the opposition first, please.
I don't have any. It's the applicant and Mr. Burdon.
Ma'am, you had it pulled because there was, I believe.
I'm sorry. Barbara Messner.
This is Byrne.
Keep a good note, Mr. Mayor.
Do the best I can, Mr. Wallace, I tell you. We welcome you. We got to redo her time, okay, please.
Yeah, this is at, I believe, 1080 Atlantic Avenue. And I thought I spoke on this, but I believe it's supposed to be one 17 cut per, like, size per driveway. And I don't know how large the area is that you want to approve for this property, because a lot of the property at the north end, they paved the entire front yard for like eight or 10 cars, and that takes away from citizen parking at the north end. So I just had questions on that because it wasn't on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Mr. Byrne, do you have a motion? I mean, Mr. Wood.
Yeah, I'd move for approval.
I have a motion for, motion in a second. Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
I voted 11 to 0. You have approved the application of David Allen Byrne for an encroachment. Please second to that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Byrne.
Thank you.
I'll now go to item number six in planning. I believe this will be our last one, Five Mile Stretch Associates. Did I miss anything, counsel?
You're right on the money there.
Okay. If you'll call the speakers on Five Mile Stretch on this planning issue, the presenter for the applicant will have 10 minutes. Then other speakers will have three minutes, and there will be a rebuttal time as well for the applicant. We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Sessoms, Honorable Vice Mayor Jones, who's stepped out for a second, and Honorable Member of City Council. For the record, my name's Eddie Burdon. I'm Virginia Beach attorney. It's my privilege to come before the council this evening, representing Five Mile Stretch Associates and Coterie's developers, on this request to rezone 32.22 acres of land on the north side of Princess Anne Road, Feral Parkway to PDH2, R10, single-family residential district to create a community of 94 upscale single-family homes to be called Princess Anne Meadows. Let me take a second to put on the record the fact that neither Five Mile Stretch Associates, nor its principal, Mr. McGinnis, nor Coterie's developers, or any of its individual members have any loans or obligations owing to Town Bank. I've provided each of you with handouts, which include, first of all, a review and summary of this proposal with some relevant historical background concerning the sub-area two of the Princess Anne Corridor, as it is sometimes referenced in our comprehensive plan. It's been in place now for about 14 years, 15 years. And it's important to understand that historical background, understand what these property owners have been caught up and input through for the last 22-plus years. Second, provided you with a copy of the proffered land use plan for this proposed neighborhood. The plan features, among other things, an entrance road that is off of the north side of Princess Anne Road. It is a divided entrance road with a landscape median in the middle of it. It has open space on both sides of the entrance road. The entrance road is accessed from southbound traffic on Feral Parkway, Princess Anne Road by an existing median break and a left-hand turn lane that exists today in Feral Parkway. And northbound traffic will be accessing the development with a right turn lane to be added by the developer off of Princess Anne Road. You'll note that there are no home sites that front on the entrance road or access road, back for a distance of 440 feet. There are no driveways, no entrances to individual lots off of the entrance road. The plan includes a verba width landscape open space buffer along the entire frontage of Feral Parkway, Princess Anne Road. At its narrowest point, that landscape buffer is 30 feet in width. At some points, it goes back for the entire depth of the property. Also note that there is a 40-foot-plus, actually 45-foot, generally, landscape buffer within the Feral Parkway right-of-way. And we have proffered under proffer number seven that we will provide a detailed, heavy landscaping plan for the 30 feet of open space on this property. But we don't have that at this point because we were waiting for all the details on the 45-plus feet of buffer in the Feral Parkway right-of-way to be completed. And it has to be approved by your planning director. So the idea is that there will be no visibility of any of these homes, which will be back 100 feet from the improved Princess Anne Road. They will be not visible from Princess Anne Road. The proposed 94-lot subdivision dwellings for each of these, their 10 prospective elevations, have all been provided. High-quality architectural elements, building materials, proffered. They are clustered and surrounded by open space, both active and passive open space. The plan preserves and dedicates to the homeowners association, as well as to the City of Virginia Beach, open space and right-of-way for a possible future extension of London Bridge Road that totaled slightly under 14 acres of land, or 43.4% of the property. Because this property is located in an area that is the strategic growth area four under our comprehensive plan, this extraordinary and extraordinarily beneficial recommendation to strive for 50% open space has been addressed by these property owners. And this open space preservation is unprecedented in this area of the city, which is north of the green line. The proposed homes range in size from 2140 square feet to 2400 square feet in living area, and they will each have a one- or two-car garage in addition to that. The anticipated sales prices range from $340,000 to $380,000. All previously proposed home sites north of the 66-foot Virginia Power right-of-way, used to be a railroad line going down to Mundan Point, before we had home sites here, they've all been removed. And the area north of the green, of the Virginia Power right-of-way is all open space. The cemetery was a point of concern previously. It's been totally surveyed. Sonar-type equipment used. The burial sites have all been located, and there's no encroachment whatsoever in that area around the burial sites, private burial site, which will be preserved. There are public right-of-way and public utility accesses provided with this proposal to accommodate future consolidation and future development of roughly 11 acres of developable land north of this project, as well as roughly 14 and 1/2 acres of developable land to the west. And here is the access to the properties in the north and the southeastern. This is the southeastern expressway in Greenbelt. There's the access for the properties to the west. There's also access provided to the properties to the east, although I'm quite confident they will develop together, utilizing the right-of-way extension from, in front of the Virginia Beach National that is shown on the comp plan. These are properties that are, really have three, essentially three families, three, two families and one property owner. So, and they will likely be some other type of development, not likely to be what's on this plan, although that's not inconceivable. That's certainly possible. We have provided, I've provided you with a copy of a zoning map that has been illustrated to give you a sense of what else is out here in this corridor. I apologize, the colors on here versus what's on the copy, pink and purple versus there. It looks red and purple, and they look pretty much very similar. The properties that have already been developed in this quarter, most of which, almost all of which were developed 20, 25 years ago or longer, range in density from over six units per acre. That's R5D, A12. In some cases, the orange is A12. All the yellow is R5D. To 3 1/2 units per acre, that's the R7.5 zoning district, to three units per acre, the R10 zoning district. R10 being the purple, R7.5 being the pink, or on your handouts, kind of red. I apologize. The color was not great on the copying machine. None of those other developments, none of those other existing subdivisions that have been there for decades have anywhere near the amount of open space that's proposed with this proposal, with this rezoning. Princess Anne Meadows is at a density of 2.92 units per acre, which is essentially at or below the residential density of all the other communities. The Department of the Navy, under the MOU, has reviewed and has approved this proposal. The density is less than the current comp plan recommendation of 3.3 units per acre in this area. And that MOU is based on keeping the density in this particular area at or below the surrounding neighborhoods, which is exactly what this does. And the Navy likes all the additional open space. We respectfully request that you approve this proffered PDH2, R10 rezoning, as our city manager, our city's professional planning staff, and your planning commission unanimously recommend it, based upon their determinations, that it is consistent with the city's comp plan and with the existing residential land use and development pattern in this corridor. The one thing I'll add to that is that what they recommended originally was 112 units, and that has been reduced down to what is before you now at 94 units. And previously, the application, as originally filed, had R5D zoning, which the density was never R5D zoning to start with, and it should have been R10 to begin with, and that is what it is now, an R10 PDH2 rezoning. These are copies of the, or pictures of all the proposed elevations. There are 10 of them. They're all very high-quality elevation. The, I could go on. There's a lot of information. I've provided you all in the handout. I hope you had a chance to take a look at it. But in the interest of time, I think everyone hopefully understands this application, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have, and I appreciate the opportunity.
We do have a question, Mr. Wallace.
Just two real quickly.
Sure, John.
What is the square footage of the grave area that's in orange on your map?
It's, I believe, John, it's probably an acre in size. They're not, the reason is the graves, it's maybe more than acre.
Okay, just.
The area that it's in, the area that it's in is 4.22 acres. So if you look at, you look at the area on the handout that's in green, if you look at the handout that's in green, that, the other one that's in front of it.
The call-out says 0.75 acres.
Okay, very good. I just can't, my bad eye, I just can't see.
Thank you.
I just can't.
It's 0.75.
And the acreage on the water retention pond, which counts as open space?
That's, and that's an unknown, because it hasn't been engineered. So that lake may be considerably smaller than that. We don't know.
But it is in the open space calculation.
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And it will, it could serve as a BMP if that road's ever been built. There's a lot of, you know.
Appreciate it very much.
We don't know the square footage at this point.
Thank you.
Have no way of knowing.
Next speakers, please.
David Dutton.
Oh.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just asking about the same site as the historical African-American gravesite. Wanted to know, is there easy access to this for the families?
Yes.
And you're going to have a fence?
Doesn't exist, really doesn't exist today. The public right-of-way will come here, and then we can certainly provide, you know, a path to the cemetery. And hopefully, there will be improvements made, some of which are my, you know, my clients or ancestors of my clients that are living there. So they have, there is access to it, and most importantly, nothing is encroaching upon it. And we'll provide.
That's the only?
We'll provide easement access, as is required by law, we'll provide easement access to the cemetery. The area will also be, you know, cordoned off, but the maintenance of that ultimately will be that of the folks whose ancestors are buried there. The homeowners association will be charged with maintaining everything around it, but the, and cut the grass in the area. But the association's not going to be responsible for maintaining the grave sites. And the headstones have been removed, not by anybody who's, you know, on this side. It's been vandalized, and that was something that was talked about over a year ago by residents in the surrounding area. And there will need to be some maintenance. There'll be markers put in. That's a part of the archaeological work. That is a part of a separate agreement with the Corps and the historical preservation folks. And that's where the grave sites should be upgraded and marked, replaced, that have been removed. They were not, none were removed by the current applicants or owners.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
David Dutton.
Mr. Dutton is our archaeological consultant. He's come down from Richmond, in case there are any questions about the agreement between the Corps of Engineers and the agencies with regard to the archaeological dig or data collection that will take place.
If we get to the end, we'll do that.
Exactly.
Put him at the end?
Yeah. Here, if there are questions, we'll.
Yeah. Valinda Seltzer Hester.
Could you say it again, please?
Valinda Hester Hester, H-E-S-T-E-R.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the City Council. I am in favor of the Five Mile Stretch Associates' land proposal. I am Valinda Hester, and I stand here as one of the descendants of the Brown estate. My deceased father, Robert C. Setser, was the son of Annie B. Setser. The property has been in our family for over a century. Some of the relatives listed in this detailed genealogy report, which dates back to 1822, are buried on the parcels. I am fully confident that honor and respect will be given to them as this property is rezoned. The developer has made a genuine effort to pay tribute and give due respect to my ancestors. He has consulted with us, and we are in full agreement with the plans for the recognition of our ancestors. It is my understanding that a fenced area will be set aside and properly identified. My parents, Hattie and Robert Setser, have shouldered the burden of paying taxes on the Annie Brown parcels for many, many years. Now that my father is deceased and my mother of an age, it is time that the property bring forth new life, become the fruitful land that it was designed to be. I ask that you approve the rezoning for these assembled parcels. I also ask that these parcels be given the same consideration as other assembled residential parcels in regards to the density regulations that the city has set forth. We do not want to be treated differently or have different standards imposed on the proposed development. Virginia Beach has always been a diverse city. There is room in such a large resort city for different types of housing to accommodate everyone. And as the person who did the invocation said before, everyone deserves to live the American dream, so let's rezone this property to help reach that goal. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Lisa Hartman.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. I'm actually representing the Christopher Farms Space Three Homeowners Association.
You'll have 10 minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, and council people. I will ask you once again to deny the change of zoning request for the Five Mile Stretch Associates. This plan has been deferred three times and has yet to fix the fundamental problems. This plan defies the guidance of the Princess Anne Corridor study, the comprehensive plan, and our city zoning ordinance. Each of these guiding documents were publicly vetted, introduced through the public hearings, and adopted. While the R10 zoning seems consistent with surrounding neighborhoods, the use of the PDH overlay allows the developer to vary the lot sizes. Theoretically, this variation in lot size would be a public benefit by preserving open space, but this only serves to benefit the developer by decreasing the infrastructure costs. The open space consists of a retention pond and a cemetery with no active space for neighborhood children. The active space, or the open space is also not accessible by the majority of the homes. You see how closely they are clustered together. The clustering of this plan allows for 5,000 square-foot lots, which are not to be created outside of the resort area according to our zoning ordinance. This clustering and open space preservation will only encourage few This clustering and open space preservation will only encourage future developments to have the smallest lots available to the builder and not varied at all. There are, this is 32 of nearly 100 acres, we are setting precedent if we change this. From a business perspective, it does make sense, but from a planning perspective, this is the antithesis of planning. The 5,000-square-foot lots, the PDH overlay, and the higher-than-recommended density thwart the intent of the documents provided, or documents approved by the public process. The $60 million project to widen Princess Anne Road to provide a limited-access artery and limit congestion is also compromised by this plan. Curb cuts were to be limited, and some existing were to be closed in the future in direct traffic to the collector roads as planned in the Princess Anne Corridor Study. The study states, "Direct access to Princess Anne Road seriously compromised the planned vision for this corridor. Such proposals would not be favorably considered for zoning change above what currently exists, which is the AG-1, AG-2, one per 15 acres." It additionally will effectively sever the remaining parcels to the west, limiting their access and further burden the taxpayers who funded this project who have to travel this road. The 2.92 units per acre exceed the recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan and the Princess Anne Corridor Study. Christopher Farms Phase III is the closest at 2.2 units per acre, which predates both the BRAC Closure and Realignment Commission and the Princess Anne Corridor Study. The incentive option of the Princess Anne Corridor Study is not met. The limited buffer plan disturbs the intended view shed and hits the motorist right in the eye, quoted from the Princess Anne Corridor Study. Each time this has been deferred, it is because of the flaws in the plan. Council comments in the past have included, "A study from the planning department hasn't put forth a plan after studying the project, public project impacts, and the fragmented parcels would be left behind." This compromises current surrounding owners' property rights, it fails to conform with the Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and the Princess Anne Corridor Study. The Princess Anne Corridor Study also emphasizes controlled access on the newly widened $60 million Princess Anne Road project. It leaves unresolved cultural and African-American artifacts. It is the intent of the planned process, the directive should be changed first by a public process. The recommendation to approve this request by both the planning department and planning commission, even though this fails to conform to the vision of this area as directed by adopted documents, and further leaves citizens concerned, and this needs to be addressed. The continual resurfacing of this plan without addressing the issues that make it unacceptable has placed undue burden upon citizens. Please show citizens you respect their input and abide by the guiding documents for our greatest city in the world, and deny this application for zoning. I also want you to be aware that I did speak with the project manager from the Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Environmental Quality, and I did confirm that they do not have a permit, and the memorandum of agreement that was attached to your council documents, I read that, and there are a lot of stipulations, I think that also should be your consideration, or something to think about, understanding that they do not yet have permit.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I want to ask everyone, all of my neighbors in opposition, to stand.
We welcome that.
Everybody?
Thank you all for coming down.
And I understand there's about 30 people in the hallway that couldn't get in.
Thank you very much for coming down.
You're the only other speaker is a consultant.
Ma'am?
You're the only other speaker is a consultant.
Okay, Mrs. Henley?
Wait, I'm sorry. My son arrived late and he was like to speak, Jackson Hartman, is that okay? He was in practice.
Certainly.
How about John Gossi, is he here?
Jackson, yes, he is.
I didn't call his. Would you come forward, sir? I just found your call.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thanks, great to be here. Sean Gazinski, a potential naval aviator, been here as captain for Southwest Airlines for 18 years, I get the honor of seeing very many of the communities around this country and around the world. I have chosen to keep my family here in Virginia Beach, even though I have the option of living literally anywhere in the United States that I would like to live. And I live here because of the quality of life here, and the quality of life that I enjoy in Christopher Farms and the minimum 10,000-square-foot lots that we have. I never come back from flying through thunderstorms, or snowstorms, or any of the other things that I get to do, and think, oh, great, I get to live by a cemetery, a big pond, I have a nice house, and that's why when I left as lieutenant commander, and now my income has quadrupled over this year, that you all get to have all my taxes, because us and the pilots from Oceana and Norfolk and Langley all choose to come and stay here and fly for American, Delta, Southwest United, JetBlue, and the others. If you want to keep the quality of life for us and you want to keep our money, you need to keep, you need to keep the kind of parcels and land and houses that we have come to respect, because I could easily go and live in Boise, or Seattle, or Baltimore, where I currently work, but I choose to live in Virginia Beach. As far as the rules go, as we say in aviation, the rules are meant for a reason, and they represent a minimum standard. When I step into my cockpit, I'm here to provide the highest level of safety above mere compliance. So the rules don't, are our ground floor, and I would ask that the city council treat the rules as I treat the rules, which is not something to strive for, but a minimum standard, and I would hope that you all would strive for something above that, so we can achieve the highest quality of living and standards for the people who want to live here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Jackson Hartman?
Jason Hartman?
Jackson?
We welcome you tonight, young man, it's nice to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor Sesams and the city council members. I'm here to discuss the five-mile stretch. The Princess Anne Corridor Study design objectives were formulated and proved through the community participation process. Access to the property within zoning application and surrounding properties is addressed as an objective or definitive achievement. This area shall limit the number and location of access to Princess Anne Road. The area is accessed by a collector road, London Bridge Extended, that'll connect Holland and Princess Anne Roads and end at the entrance of VB National Golf Course. This limits access points on busy road from Princess Anne Road from Feral Parkway to Nemo Parkway, which is an area designated by the Comprehensive Plan as an access control corridor. The Comprehensive Plan additionally addresses the importance of management of traffic for the safety and proper functioning of roadways. The current proposed entrance providing the only neighborhood access lies on Princess Anne Road, and already has design flaws that will impact traffic. This access point additionally will cut off remaining surrounding development properties to the west from the design accesses through the future London Bridge Extended, which will add yet another access point on Princess Anne Road. This neighborhood will also be zoned for Christopher Farms Elementary. The lack of a collective roadway connecting Holland and Princess Anne Road essentially cuts off easy access to the serving elementary school. Parents will have to either travel the five miles west on Princess Anne Road around Dam Neck to Holland, or a two-mile route east on Princess Anne Road around Nemo Parkway to Holland. There's a third option, this will likely be the desired easy option of cutting through Christopher Farms, shortening their trip to one mile. This increased traffic endangers the safety of neighborhood children who are zoned to walk to school, and my little brother who is one of those many children. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, young man. Good job.
Can I ask them, young man?
Jackson?
Jackson, what school do you go to?
First Colonial.
First Colonial, they should be very proud of your presentation tonight, so should your parents.
Very good. Mr. Whitney, sign them up. All right, Mr. Burdon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a hard act to follow. I would note that all of the, there was no opposition from any of the adjoining property owners whatsoever, as is set forth in the information that you provided and in your staff report. When the comp plan of 2000 put this sub-area two in place, the era was incentivized, assemblage required. Up until that point, everything around here, as that zoning map shows you, including Christopher Farms, which is definitely not at 2.2 units per acre, and I've got the plan, and I've got all the, I've got all of the zoning when it was done, and this Princess Anne, this extension of London Bridge Road was actually smack up against the back of these properties on that approved plan. Now the city has accommodated those existing residents, like the others who've been there for 20, 25 years, with a green space buffer, which we are dedicating a part of free of charge, along with the right-of-way. And these are property owners that have lived here and whose families have owned these properties long before Ms. Hartman and her neighbors were conceived or their neighborhood was rezoned, along with all the others that were rezoned out here when Holland Road was a two-lane road and Princess Anne Road was a two-lane rural road. In the meantime, there was a moratorium on rezoning, and then the sub-area two was put in place with the idea to try to assemble all these fragmented parcels, many of which have driveways, shared driveways accessing Princess Anne or Holland Road. This will allow those to be eliminated, and eventually these, once we get the southeastern alignment discerned, these will all be able to be accessed from where we're accessing, so one access for everything. That's what will happen. We didn't create this median break in turn lanes in Princess Anne Road, it was put there with the understanding these properties were going to be developed. But they can't be assembled now because the incentive, or they, it's difficult to assemble, these were assembled before the change in the comp plan based on BRAC. Now the zoning that we're incentivized to get is the same zoning everybody around us already has, and frankly, there's some issues with that being equal and fair treatment. The owners of these properties have waited for generations, and they've had to wait another 20-some years while all these other folks have moved in these neighborhoods that were created on inferior streets at the time. To suggest, as was suggested, that your staff, your planning commission, your city manager don't know what they're talking about, and this doesn't comply with the Comprehensive Plan and the land use pattern for this area of the city, I think that's a bit on the arrogant side. It does comply, it's equitable, and similarly situated properties must be treated similarly under our law, and as Ms. Hartman in some of the emails that I have seen, has suggested that these property owners are condemned to two units per acre. Now, Ms. Hartman's community zoned in 1992, 153 homes, R-7.5 zoning on a, at the time was a narrow country road, now it's going to be a four-lane highway, that's already happening. Princess Anne Road was the same way. For her to suggest that these minority members of our community, whose families have owned these properties adjacent to her neighborhood long before it was ever thought of that neighborhood being there, that they should only be allowed to develop their land at two units per acre and not what everybody else has, that's not a position that I would want to take. And I certainly know that that is not the position that is shared by our city manager or our city staff, and I certainly don't believe it's a position that the city council shares with Ms. Hartman. As a practical view, there are conflicts in our Comprehensive Plan, that is true. 50% open space, strive for 3.3 units per acre, those two don't, you can't do them both, not possible, you know, but that's what our Comprehensive Plan says, and that's what these folks have tried to do. They have waited, and they have waited, and they have waited, and they've done the things that they were asked to do, to remove the development anywhere near Christopher Farms and to preserve the cemetery. You've got the plan that was approved before by the planning commission and staff for 112 lots that had, you know, property developed around that cemetery. It's all gone now, all gone now, and we are at less than three units per acre, it's not more density than anybody else out there. And with that, I don't think there is a practical reason or justification not to approve this rezoning as has been recommended to you by your staff. I do agree with the fact that the comp plan, because it went from six to three, and there weren't changes made that should have been made with that 50% open space requirement, it's a little disjointed. But as far as the type of development, the placement of development, the open space, which is phenomenal, open space, less impervious surface, less stormwater runoff, higher-value properties, that's what our comp plan says, that's been our experience in the city of Virginia Beach. We want more open space, we want more tree canopy preservation, that's what this does, three times what any other properties out there that have developed 20, 25 years ago have done. And that's a big plus for the environment and a big plus for the homeowners in this area.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Henley.
Thank you, Mr. Burdon.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley.
I certainly am not being arrogant to the staff or to the city manager or to the planning commission in disagreeing with their opinion. I have my opinion as well, and I think it's a pretty studied opinion, which is taken specifically from the documents that we have adopted, not something that I made up. I see that in the write-up for this development, the sentence that says, "Planning staff has identified the Princess Anne Corridor as one of the areas needing study and policy revision during the upcoming Comprehensive Plan update process." Okay, so very well, this does need some study and update during the upcoming Comprehensive Plan process, but I don't think that we make revisions in a piecemeal fashion by a rezoning rather than going through the Comprehensive Plan process and allowing all of the public input that comes with that. Yes, this sub-area two, which it's called, is a very difficult area, and that was recognized in the Princess Anne Corridor Study in the year 2000, which has then also been updated and amended twice since then, and included each time in the Comprehensive Plan by reference. However, the basic statements for this sub-area two have not changed. We're looking at 100 acres here in this sub-area two, not 32 acres. And if all of these property owners, and granted, these are many wonderful people, but if they had all participated, then we would certainly be looking at what is allowed through the incentive plan. The Comprehensive Plan didn't give this area six units per acre. It said that it could earn that through an incentive process by consolidating all or nearly all of these 100 acres. And in order to get that incentive level, it needed to consolidate all or nearly all of these 100 acres. Of course, with the BRAC, the six units per acre went to what is in the general area, but still, it needs to be consolidated in order to achieve that incentive level. And I'm reading specifically here, "Significant large-scale parcel assemblage is achieved, therefore, all or nearly all of parcels within each designated sub-area must be consolidated into a single well-configured tract of land, enabling the creation of a safe, coordinated, and attractively-designed development plan." Well, if all or nearly all of this had been consolidated, and all of these property owners or nearly all of them had agreed to sell, then we would be looking at what could be an overall very well-designed plan. But what we have is a plan that includes only 32 of these acres, and possibly less now since part of it has been temporarily withdrawn, but we still leave the other 70 acres around it that is not a part of this, and that's where the problem is going to be. As I said back in August of 2013, we have the transcript, and I asked if there could be something that could be developed that would give an overall design for this entire area, and unfortunately, we don't have that. So we're left at what the Corridor Study said, and they used a very specific example of sub-area two that consists of 27 properties, about 100 acres. First example, in the case of a hypothetical development proposal that consolidates perhaps five parcels on 30 acres with direct roadway access to Princess Anne Road, no more density allowed than the AG-1 and AG-2 districts should be granted. The second level, if a development proposal that consolidates 60 acres protects the adjoining neighborhood with landscape buffers and ties all internal roadway accesses to London Bridge Road, may warrant a baseline density of two dwelling units per acre with no commercial elements. element. And then the third level, all or nearly all, then you may warrant that additional incentive. Well, we have, we're not even saying go to the lowest, which is what this example said, but what if it had accommodated 60? Then it would be maybe two. But what we have here are 5,000-square-foot lots, which is really not comparable to the most, the closest area, and this isn't the residence number, it's the Planning Department, I guess, that says Christopher Farms Phase III, 2.28 units per acre. That's their number, it's not otherwise. The problem is that it doesn't do what the, what the requirement was, and that is consolidate all of these, and we still have all of these fragmented parcels, and we really don't know what the whole thing would look like, and how these other parcels to the west and to the north are going to tie into this is really unknown. And as far as these, this wonderful open space here, I think it's all that's pretty much shown on this wetlands delineation, is pretty much what makes that eastern open space area. And, and I think there, there are quite a few wetlands in this remaining area, which tells us we really don't know what it might all be. I've looked at this and looked at it from every possible angle for a year. It's unfortunate that it's been deferred so many times, but I really am right where I was when we looked at it the first time, August 13th of 2000, or August something or other, 2013. It's still not meeting the requirements in order to get this level of development. It's fragmented, it leaves too many parcels, and, and if these people would all like to get together, then, then we could look at all of it together in the fashion that, that this plan has, has, has suggested. But with only a third of these parcels, I think they are really limiting what the other two-thirds of these people are going to be able to do with their property, and, and that gives me a lot of, of difficulty. So I am just not able to recommend approval, and if we're going to act tonight, then my motion would be that we would deny this application up for us.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions?
I'd just like to add one thing to, it's hard to outdo the learned, Mrs. Henley, when it comes to these kind of analysis, but I just want to make it clear, because I have the greatest respect for Mr. Burdon, and I know he laid down some, I guess, legal words for the, for the record, but to make it clear that based on the plans that were available and the expectations of the property owner, they are being treated in accordance to what the plan would have suggested and signaled that they would otherwise get, and they're not being denied a public signal as to what could happen. And a PDH overlay is not an entitlement, it's a grant of discretion of the government upon meeting the plans and of the people, and so I just wanted to add that to Mrs. Henley.
We have a motion and a second. I'll call for the question, please.
I have a motion of 10 to 1. You have denied the application of the five-mile stretch.
We'll now move, we do not have any appointments tonight. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? We will adjourn, and once the television camera's off, we'll have open mic. Let me know when open mic can begin, please. For those who are remaining for open mic, you're allowed three minutes and no more than three speakers on the same subject.